Yeah, that was nice. I'm glad you did that. Thanks a lot.
Perfect. We're all set? Great. I'd like to start the town council meeting for Monday, December 16th. Councilor Forrest, would you lead us in?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Dolores, attendance, please?
Councilor Warren Bello is unable to attend. Councilor Flanagan?
Here.
Councilor Forrest?
Here.
Councilor Hill?
Here.
Councilor Mazarella?
Here.
Councilor Parker?
Here.
Councilor Pentalo?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hurley is unable to attend, and Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, before we get going to the agenda, I would like to introduce the Camalee family. We're here today. We have an official statement from His Excellency Governor Ned Lamont. I'll come right up here. If the family wants to join me, you can come on up. Here, you guys. Right along there. See if I can come right here. Great. Well, this is a couple of days late, a couple of weeks late. We're sorry about this. We're just trying to work out the timing wise on this. But this is an official statement from His Excellency Governor Ned Lamont. And I will read it. It is an official statement of, whereas it is important to accurately detect and test for Phalen McDermott syndrome, also known as 22Q13 deletion syndrome, which is a rare genetic condition caused by a deletion or other structural change of the terminal end of the chromosome 22 in the 22Q13 region, or a disease causing mutation of the Shank three gene. Whereas this microdeletion is rarely discovered by typical genetic screening, and therefore a fluorescent insdeo hybridization FISH test or whole exome sequency is recommended to confirm the diagnosis. And whereas individuals, parents, and advocacy groups can increase awareness of Phalen McDermott syndrome and its symptoms through science, education, opportunities. And whereas although the range and severity of symptoms may vary, Phalen McDermott syndrome is generally thought to be characterized by intellectual disability of varying degrees, delayed or absent speech, symptoms of autism spectrum disorder, low muscle tone, motor delays, and epilepsy. And whereas the state of Connecticut supports increased education and advocacy to raise awareness of Phalen McDermott syndrome and to better promote the expansion of resources available for the study and treatment of this genetic condition. Now therefore, I, Ned Lamont, Governor of the state of Connecticut, do hereby declare October 21st, 2019 as Phalen McDermott Syndrome Awareness Day in the state of Connecticut, signed by Ned Lamont, Governor of the state of Connecticut. There you go. This is for Ava. And on a personal note, her brother Joe had made mention that they should recognize this, just as the proclamation says, that awareness is key for this type of syndrome. So with the awareness of Phalen McDermott Syndrome Day, hopefully we can recognize this and one day look for a treatment to it. So thank you, Joe, for recognizing it. Thank you, Ava, for coming. And thank you, parents, for being here as well. We appreciate it. Here you go. On your behalf. You have me on deck, you know? Okay. We'll see you. Take care. Hopefully no school tomorrow?
Maybe.
Oh, sure. Yes. Great. We'll get this to you guys. I'll put this in there a little bit, and then I'll put it for you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Take care. Thank you. I don't see anything else up here, so we'll go to public comment. Anybody wanting to speak? Gus, Mr. Colantonio, come on up.
Gus, if you can just hold on one moment before you speak, I will start the clock with four minutes. The alarm will go off at four minutes, and then I will add a final minute to it. We have timer difficulties.
It's not going to take that long, anyway. Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. You know, I feel bad because every time I come up here, it seems that I complain all the time. And I start to look back and says, well, do I really have a reason? Or was I born to complain? Sometimes last year, or even before, I complained about Bird Road, 24-foot wide, parking on both sides. And every time I go there, there's always like a problem. Something comes to my mind. It says, if there is a fire truck that has to go by, it will not fit. And I complained about a couple of years ago. Nothing has been done. During the summer, I did stop by the Farm Marshal, Mr. DiGnoti, I guess. And I talked to him. He says, listen, I have a concern. I mean, every time I go by, again, the street, it's a problem. People park on both sides. People park, you know, on the right side, facing the south or whatever, always in the wrong, and nothing ever gets done. And it's sad because when I tell my friends, they usually say, that's why we never go. Nobody listens. Is there any accountability in government work? I always ask, and I don't think there is any. How long is it going to take to put no parking on one side of the street, on that particular street? I mean, once you know, does it take forever? You're talking about like, you know, a couple of signs, $200 or $300, and it's done. Even when you get out of a driveway, that there are cars parked all over the place, it's always a possibility. As a matter of fact, not too long, two or three years ago, somebody, a cousin of mine, who went to see my brother, coming out, and he hit a car. It seems that there should be better regulation, and it seems to be, it should be more accountability in towns. And I don't think we have it right here. And as long as I see this, and as long as I see something wrong, I will not go away, guys. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. How are you?
My name's Rick Newell, and I live at 308 Knott Street. I have a concern. Maybe you guys can look into it. But when I come down Franklin Avenue in the daytime, there is a flag at full staff. When I come up Knott Street at night, it's still left at full staff. It's up 24/7, in the rain, in the snow, proper flag etiquette. If you're going to leave this flag up, it needs to be illuminated at night or take it down. So maybe you guys can look into it.
Yeah, just again, where is, where, Mr. Newell, is the exact location?
Knott Street, Knott Street in Wilkett Hill, where the green is, where the V is. When you come under the underpass.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look. Let's see. Just check and verify that it's town property. If it is, we'll work to make sure.
It is, because Sal used to raise and lower it every Memorial Day.
Yep.
So it's got to be on town property, right?
We'll take a look. Well, thank you for letting it, letting us know and getting it to our attention. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. First of all, I'd like to thank the town manager for providing that information to me for, from the Blum and Shapiro, the town's auditors. Mr., this finance director, Mr. O'Neil, got that to me very quickly. Thank you very much. As you know, I've spoke about my taxes going up constantly. $590 this year. That's 7%. 7% increase. In a year that we had revaluation, it should have gone down with all that brand-new assets that came on board from our great, what do they call it? Economic development that we've had in town. We do have a staff that handles that. And we've been hearing for so long that all these businesses were coming to town, coming to town. But it didn't amount to much. $99 million, that was it? In a town this size? At least that's what it said in the budget, 99 million. But then again, Mr. Forrest said that our taxes were only going to go up $7. Mine went up $590. I think you made a big goof, Mr. Forrest. You've made a lot of goofs. I think you deserve where you're sitting right now. I'd like to also say that we need to find ways of cutting our costs here in town. And, you know, I've talked about several of them already. Another one that I had spoke about, but I never got finished talking about, was the Standish House. In the lease, it says the initial terms of this lease shall be for 50 years. 50 years. Can you imagine someone giving a lease for 50 years? Mr. Forrest approved it in the end. It shall commence on September 1st, 2007, and continue thereafter until September 1st, 2057, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the lease. Landlord shall have the right at the 10th lease year and each 10th year thereafter with the tenant's involvement and discussion, and upon approval of the town council to revise monetary terms and conditions set forth herein provided. However, the any increases shall remain within the tenant's ability to pay. Otherwise, the increase shall be told until the tenant can afford the increase. This is in Section 2 of Terms. You want to read it sometime. Granted, September 1st of 2017 is 12 years ago. And we now have eight more years, but I think it would be very wise to start talking about this and get it on that chart for something to do when you get to that point. Because chances are, you folks will be, different people will be sitting in there, but you need to have it up there where everybody knows about it and everybody's expecting it. I mean, this was a sweetheart deal of rent for $100 a year for the Standish House. And we, the town, is responsible for so much. I would also encourage you to look into giving it back to the Standish family. They're very generous people. They could also go ahead and give it to the historic society if they would like. But then, the historic society would be responsible for the maintenance of outside, the maintenance inside, the maintenance on the building, and all these other costs and insurances that we pay. We pay. Us taxpayers pay. We should get rid of that dump. We should get rid of that. It has no asset ability to us. It's an asset that's sitting there that's just chewing away at our dollars, and we should get rid of it. And I would encourage you to look into this and get it out on that Gantt chart. So in the next eight years, long before eight years, in the sixth year from now, start talking to them about how much you want rent from them, or they should go elsewhere for benefits. And then we could get rid of it. Because we don't need assets that are costing us this kind of money. And if you go back and look, how much that cost to have that building painted and refurbished and all that other stuff, why should we citizens be paying for it? We don't get anything for it. And it's an asset that, it's an asset that someone else has taken the rent from, $43,000 a year. And we're losing everything. So I would hope that you folks would, you know, I may even send this to all of you so you can read it, including Mr. Forrest. I'm sure he read it many times when he approved this. He also, well, okay, he's done some bad things here, and we need to let everybody know how bad he is. But anyway, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing, Marjorie? Mrs. Callahan-Carson?
Hello, I'm Marjorie Carson at 12 Avalon. I have a couple of concerns I wanted to vocalize here. One is with the snow plowing. The last few years, I've noticed this, that, and wanted to see if there's an alternative to the way the town removes snow from sidewalks. Because as someone who walks their kids to school, and I'm a big dog walker, because I, you know, have a dog, and I live near the parks in Old Weathersfield, over the last few years, instead of them snowblowing the sidewalks, the town workers use plows that are over like one to two feet wider than the sidewalks on the other side. And as a result, some of you may have noticed that large, like, long, large swaths of grass and turf are ripped out each winter over and over and over again as the sidewalks are plowed. So piles of grass are left on the side, and they also create large divots on either side. So in some areas, it's just mud, and water accumulates. So in the spring, summer, when it rains, it's just, you're walking on the sidewalk on either side, it's just water. And, you know, that doesn't look good. It's weeds. It's not grown grass. And it also, you know, attracts mosquitoes and things like that nature. And another thing is that the level of sidewalk is so much higher now, so it's not level with the ground on the other side. So over the years, it's been like two or three years I've noticed this, as the grass has been ripped and ripped out and ripped out. The sidewalks up here, the grass is down here, easy tripping hazard. And this is all over Cove Park, Sterling Field, Mikey's Place, all places where a lot of elderly and kids walk and walk to school. So I did bring this up a couple of years ago with just an email to Jeff Bridges. And he said the reason why they use snow plows now is to save money on labor, and it's quicker. And also, there's, I guess, there's state requirements on how quickly the snow has to be removed. But he said that they will, the town will go back in the spring to fix all the areas where the town, where the grass has been removed. But as a person who's been in this town for a while, walks their dogs, that just doesn't happen. The only place I've seen them actually repair the grass along the sidewalk is around the Board of Ed building. I don't know why. It's literally the line around the Board of Ed, and it doesn't go into Sterling Field or Mikey's Place. It doesn't get fixed there. I don't know why. But even then, it's like, that's a lot of labor and cost, too. If you had to do this every year in the spring, and you did have to go to where every single sidewalk is around town property, had to refill the grass with grass seed and dirt to make it safer and look better and, you know, naturally grow, that's a lot of money, too. So my question to you is, is there a way that we can put our brains together and find maybe better equipment or some other way to have a narrower way to remove the snow instead of taking all the grass along with it? And also, the salt gets poured on the grass as well on the other side. So just as someone who sees this all the time, because where I live, and it doesn't improve, and it's been getting worse and worse over the years. So that's one thing. The next thing I wanted to talk about is my concern over the burn plant in Hartford. That's managed by MIRA, NIRA? MIRA? I don't know how they pronounce it. As you probably know, the facility's been broken down several times this past year, including situations where there's fires started in the facility. And also where, to the point where it broke down for several weeks, where they didn't stop garbage from being delivered there, and that it was like 20,000 tons of garbage were just piled up in the building. And this building, these buildings are really close to Weathersfield, really close to where we live, I live, in the north end of town. So we get the brunt of that. And I know they're kind of talking to the state legislature. They're, they know that they need to repair it, and they're trying to figure out how. It could cost up to $200, $300 million. And that's up in the air. But I think it's really important to really look at this as a town, as, you know, you as leaders, and maybe, maybe there's someone here that also is assigned to look at it and watch over it. But maybe do extra watching over this issue to represent us. Because Hartford bears the brunt of it big time. Because they get all the trucks that come in, and the burning of all the garbage of 70 towns. 70 towns bring their garbage to Hartford to burn. We are right there. My neighborhood is right there. And I can smell the burning sometimes, and we can get a whiff of the emissions sometimes when the wind is blowing a certain way in the summer or something like that. So we should, as a town, think about how it affects us. And if they go to maybe put $300 million into this facility, maybe we should push back and say, hey, do we, should we even have this facility here? Should we be like 70 towns, shouldn't they take more of the brunt instead of just us in Hartford, which is, we're the ones that, you know, really take on the most? And do we get a discount? Do we have any say, do we have any more say over how this facility is going to be managed in the future? You know, 70 towns drive their garbage over the highways that are in Weathersfield every day. And we get the emissions from that, too. So I think because it's kind of a prime issue right now, it will be this year in front of the state legislature. And fees will go up, just like MDC with Mike. Mike, I know, is concerned about the MDC costs. The cost of the garbage and the tipping fees and the tonnage fees is going to go up as well because of these problems. But I think it's where, maybe a point where we could actually have a say because they have to make decisions. So maybe we can push to be more of a decision maker and push a policy that would be beneficial to us instead of us bearing the garbage of all these other towns. Like, the outer suburbs don't have to bear the brunt at all. So just something like that. And finally, I would just say, I know we're at the beginning stage of the budget, but I fully support a fully funded budget for the schools. And we'll be watching. I'll be watching. And I just hope you know that there were a lot of cuts last year, and it was almost, you know, cut to the bone. And also, just, my daughter started freshman year this year with a half year of social studies because they couldn't afford a full year of social studies. It's never happened before. If you look at any other high school around, they all have a full year of social studies or freshman year, as well as the remaining years, half year of social studies because of the budget cuts. And there are other cuts as well, which I won't go over because I'm going to go over time. But, um, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak? Mr. Lynch?
Jim Clinch, 903 Ridge Road. Nobody seems to want to talk about it, but the water department. I've lived in town for 54 years, and when I moved to town, water was the cheapest commodity you could buy. Now, it's probably getting, buttoning up there with the electric light company and the, in the gas company. I own another priest's property that's vacant, and no water's being used, and I get a bill of $67 a month. The worst thing this council could have ever done, not this council, but the councils before, is to allow them to go to monthly billing rather than the three months that they were. Because they've really, I pay more now in my monthly billing than I did in my three-month billing. And I read an article recently in the papers about, I don't know, they want to, they want to jack up another increase in the water. I think it's obscene what they're doing to this town in the district. And it's about time somebody stepped up and told them no more. And I realized we had a problem in town where people were getting sewage and stuff in their basement. But, you know, it's like moving next to a firehouse and then complaining about the horn going off when there's a fire, which happened in this town. Now they only blow one short beep, and that's it. Because the people around them complained about the noise. Same thing with the water department. You should have known before you moved into the house whether it had a problem or not. You know, give me a break, and I'm paying for these people's mistakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clinch. Anybody else want to speak? First, public comment. If not, okay. Thank you. We'll move into general comments, council reports. Any council reports? Councilor Pentalo?
Yeah, I was actually able to attend both the EDIC and the RDA commissions this past Thursday. So kind of, if you don't mind, I know, I could even, I could pass off the brooks if you want, or I could just do both. It's your call.
He's got it. My voice is a little off from three games of hockey.
Yeah, I got it. All right, so just, I'll start off with the EDIC first. A couple of dates to keep in mind. The Old Weathersfield Parking Study has had three meetings open to all residents. The fourth will be January 13th at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers. The State of the Town Breakfast will take place on January 16th at 8:00 AM at the Keene Center. The team is working hard on the town guide and calendar and should be ready in the next week or two. The Marketing Committee will be meeting this week to discuss business outreach initiatives to ensure strong communication with businesses, excuse me. Planning and zoning, sorry to steal your thunder, Tom, but they received an application for 24 Maple, Maple Street, which is on the corner of Route 3 and Middletown Ave. Happy to report the board has already, has rental commitments for 50% of units in the first building, and they're still anticipating Phase Two to be completed in late spring, early summer. 25 businesses and developers from town attended the Connecticut Green Bank Information Session, Information Session on Funds Available to Reduce Their Operating Costs. The initial feedback overall was positive, which is, I think, is a great thing for businesses in town. Last week, I was actually unable to attend, but the Salute to Business was held, and it was a tremendous success from what I heard. The town recognized various businesses for the service to Weathersfield residents. Pure and Furniture, the building is officially down, and development will continue throughout the winter, weather permitting. Moving into RDA, pretty short meeting. What was discussed were the next steps regarding the moratorium on the Salins Highway. Beginning in January, a subcommittee of the RDA will begin drafting potential regulations for review. We also discussed the use of the Blight Ordinance as a supplement to our municipal development plan, reasoning being addressing property conditions, aids in stabilizing the tax base. We also discussed reviewing incentives from other communities and looking at what they do and determining if we need to evolve our toolbox for what we're doing. And last but not least, we discussed how best to continue our outreach to business owners and private developers.
That's great. Good to hear. Somebody else? Councilor Mazarella?
Two weeks ago, I attended the planning and zoning hearing on WAG Time Plan Stay on Beaver, Beaver Road. They were granted a special permit to operate the doggy daycare with an outdoor, outdoor area for the dogs to play. The owners have agreed to put up a sound barrier along three sides of the, of the property. The sound engineers have pretty much guaranteed that they'll be able to knock the, the noise down about 20 decibels. They stated that the residents would not be able to hear the dogs. There are stipulations. They're, they will be required to have the sound engineer perform testing on two separate occasions to confirm that the design is working. If it is not working, or if they continue to receive complaints from, from neighbors, they've agreed to take whatever remedial action is necessary to, to correct the problem, including changing their method of operation and when and if the dogs could even go outside. There's a meeting tomorrow night, as Pat said, on 24 Middletown Avenue for the ABC Burger place. I don't know what the name is.
Artisan Burger.
Artisan Burger, sorry. So that's tomorrow night in these chambers at 7:00 o'clock.
Great. Any other council reports? If not, I've got just a couple of things I want to say. Tonight is, to go off of what Mr. Clinch was saying about the MDC, tonight is the MDC vote. As of right now, we don't have an update on whether or not they voted to accept it or not, which may be a good thing because it's been two and a half hours. So if the deliberations are going on, we're not the only town that's voicing our concern, our concerns about the rate increases. our concerns about the rate increases. I did sit in a panel held by Senator Saud Anwar from South Windsor last week, that the senator from South Windsor wanted to host and have MDC there. It was an informative meeting that MDC provided, similar to what they have been providing in the past to us, but our voices were collectively heard by them that a rate increase yet again would be not, you know, looked fairly upon by this council. If I do get any updates from the MDC vote, I will be sure to let you know tonight. Salute, Pat did say the Salute to Business was the other day. That was a, a success. We do it every year, the EDIC with the Chamber of Commerce. It is a great way to celebrate businesses that have had commitment here in town, as well as new businesses that have chosen to locate in Weathersfield. We do appreciate having them here as well. Oh, yes, Live Right Wellness, Kim's Flower Shop, Ascot Catering, Young Italian American Association Ladies Auxiliary, which I didn't see any young ladies there, by the way. They were, they've been around since seventy years older, or seventy years or so, and Ooh La La Dog Spa, as well as Lucky Lou's. We're all recognized as outstanding stewards in the business community for their years of service here in town. We do appreciate having them. Also, speaking of investing in town, last night was the premiere of Rediscovering Christmas on the Lifetime Channel. It is yet another movie that was filmed here in town. I was invited to the Historical Society to say a few remarks, and this is their second year of having their own premiere for that movie. For those that don't know, Old Weathersfield has been chosen as filming location for the last two years for various Hallmark and Lifetime movies. It's great for the community. It does a number of things, having production companies here in town. They eat at our restaurants. They stay in hotels nearby. They shop at our retail establishments, as well as, I believe, they cover the costs of some of the public works and fire and police that need to be on site as well. Having these production companies in town is a win-win for the town, I believe, and it gives us a chance to showcase what we have to offer, and hopefully, they will consider coming back to, to Weathersfield in the future. This is also our last meeting before the holidays, and I just wanted to say, just a quick remark, that Social and Youth Services are doing a gift drive, a toy drive. I believe they are still accepting unwrapped gifts downstairs in Town Hall at Social and Youth Services up until, I believe, the eighteenth. So, if anybody is looking to donate, that's a great opportunity, and I know Social and Youth Services would appreciate it. To get into a little bit of business, I do want to ask the town manager a couple, just a couple of reports that we've been talking about in the past. The Tremco Roof Report, I know one had come out in the past about a year or two ago. If we could get an updated Tremco Report, condition of town building, and I believe Board of Ed buildings as well, they provide both, just to get an idea of, you know, how our maintenance on the roofs are doing. Every year, it seems to come that, you know, one or two roofs need to be repaired or something, but if we can get an overall sense on the condition of those roofs. And then finally, and this is something I'd only seen once or twice in my time on the council, but I know engineering provides it. It is a, a report on the condition of the town roads. From what I remember, there's actually two reports, if I remember correctly. There's one that gives conditions, and it's a grading scale of, you know, zero to a one hundred, but there's also one that comes out prior to the fall and spring paving seasons that talks about the, or shows off which the priorities are, and they're by mileage, I guess. It's that formula that we have to figure in, which roads can fit into that formula. If we can get a, a sense of where we are with priority roads, as well as a general accounting of the condition of roads, we would appreciate that. And I think that may be about it for right now. Town managers' report.
Give me one second just to finish the note.
Yep, yep.
No problem. Thank you to the mayor and council. Just quickly for the report. As of recently, we added two new members to the Keisha Farms for a total of nine. That will top off the total. As you may recall, there were forty-two total applicants. We've balanced them on experience, background, trying to get, I'll call it, an eclectic mix of talent to the table so that we can go through the process. Those two names are Pamela Rowe and Mary Breton. They are both the butters to the property. We anticipate that a request for proposals will be going out, posted probably no later than the end of this week. I'm anticipating Thursday or Friday, in which case, we'll be able to obtain a consultant. Proposals will be due in January, with the committee then going to rank those consultants in terms of professional ability, previous experience, diversity of the team, and their ability to deliver, as well as cost. At this point, I'll anticipate that we'll interview probably the top three to four candidates, depending upon how many individuals actually apply. And then, at that point, we'll go through the process of seeing whether or not we can retain them, since there would be some financial impact. The committee will post, beginning in January, a regular meeting schedule. At this point, you're looking at the first meeting of, the first Monday of every month, starting at five thirty prior to the council meeting, which I apologize, I walked in, I think, at seven oh one, because we were just wrapping up the end of the special meeting. We, staff began reviewing the capital improvement projects for this year. We are in the process of creating a draft list, which will go to the CIAC or Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. The first meeting of the committee is scheduled for Wednesday, January fifteenth. What we do on an annual basis is we meet, we select a date, we'll meet three times with a fourth meeting pending, depending upon whether or not we can get through the entire process. At this case, in this case, we're looking every Wednesday, starting January fifteenth, in the town manager's conference room. Those dates are subject to change, but they can be found on, at the town clerk's office, as well as posted on the website. For me, far too often, I think we take for granted the dangers our emergency service personnel go through on a regular basis. As a small town, sometimes you don't hear everything that is going on and everything that's happening. Unfortunately, we do hear about the negative things more often than the positive. Last week, the police department recognized eleven officers for acts of bravery or going above and beyond in their normal course of duty over the last three years. Those recognitions include a life savings award, which were given to Lieutenant Donald Crabtree, Lieutenant Michael Connolly, Detective Christopher Morris, Officer Peter McGee, SRO Eric Knapp, Detective James Darby, Sergeant Michael Wren. Also, a Police Department Division Citation given to Officers Robert Malinowski and Officers, and Officer Kevin Wallace. Citation and Medal of Merit for Officer Peter Salvatore, and the Chief's Letter of Commendation given to Officer Kevin Foster. Family and friends came out to support them, and it was a great opportunity to recognize these individuals for not only just what they do every day, but for those unique circumstances that, that drive them to do the things that I don't know if I would be able to do. So, I think it was important, and I thank the chief, as well as the staff, who were able to put that together so that we could recognize those employees. As council, as the mayor mentioned and Council Pentlo mentioned, there was great celebration for the Salute to Business. In addition to the names that the mayor recognized, there was special recognition for economic development in the last year given to the Borden, new developments at eighteen eighty-one Berlin Turnpike, and the Learning Experience, which opened up at eighty-eight Executive Square. And also, Charles Forzick was recognized by the Tourism Commission for his efforts and years serving on the commission and trying to bring new ideas and new, and drive new individuals into town. And I, there were four photo contest winners that were, that were named. If you have an opportunity, those will cycle through the website, and we're trying to get those into the, the annual calendar, which should be out in the next two weeks, hopefully less than the next two weeks. But we had some scheduling concerns with commissions. We wanted to make sure those were settled before we actually printed many copies to get out into the public. And then, just quickly, oh, the town has submitted a request for proposals for the town attorney. Those are due on December thirtieth. I believe the process is for, for the council to form a, a committee to review those, so.
I think the RFP goes till the end of the month.
Yep.
And then, committee will be created probably the first week of January to, to review.
Excellent. And last, some, some fun news, which kind of ties into the, the stardom that we're getting for movies in town. Wallet Hub, the personal finance website, released its twenty nineteen Best Small Cities in America, which included metros with populations between twenty, metro areas between, populations between twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand. The list compared more than twelve hundred cities across the nation based on forty-two indicators of livability, homeownership rate, the number of performing arts centers in the area, job growth, and again, a long list. Connecticut actually had twenty-two small cities make the overall rankings. West Hartford ranked number one. Our little town of Weathersfield ranked number three. And our highest category, categories were in affordability, economic health, education and health of residents, quality of life, and safety. And with that, I'll conclude by saying happy holidays to everyone.
Great. I think all of us who live in Weathersfield know that we're number one, and we're not going to give it up to West Hartford. Great, Dolores?
Well, I have to tell you that we've already started, the town committees for the Democrats and Republicans are going to be having enrollments for people for their committees, and they have to be done by January fourteenth, and into my office by the fifteenth. So, we're on to a very busy year, twenty twenty, for the, a lot of primaries probably will be had. And Weathersfield and Connecticut's primary for the presidential is August, is April twenty-eighth. So, it's not until then, and then everybody else will be doing it before us, but we're better, we're earlier than usual, the state.
Are we part of the Super Tuesday, or is that?
Yeah, one of them.
Okay, great. Looking forward to it. Great. Council action. I think we have some appointments to, or first resignations from appointments.
I make a motion to accept the resignations from the following. Inlands, Wetlands, and Conservation Commission, Lou E. Michaels, from term of seven one nineteen to six thirty twenty-two. From Zoning Board of Appeals, James F. Riley, term of one three seventeen to six thirty twenty. And from the Building Committee, Charles Carey, twelve seven fifteen to project completion.
Great. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. And then, now we have appointments to boards and commissions.
I make a motion to accept the following appointments. To the Youth Advisory Board, Stephanie Vernile, twelve sixteen nineteen to six thirty twenty-two. And from inland, inland wetlands and conservation commission, Mary Frazier, twelve sixteen nineteen to six thirty twenty.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion's adopted. Great. Thank you. I think the next, we go to ordinance resolution and appointment for introduction, and this is the ordinance to amend Chapter one twenty-two on blighted premises. I believe all council members have it. I just wanted to ask the town manager, is there, what's protocol for this? We will just introduce it tonight. Public hearing would most likely be first meeting in January, and then, any changes or suggestions we would take in at that point would be adopted second meeting of January?
Yep, yep. You can, that's, you're correct. You, it's probably best to do it that way, right? So, you'd have the public hearing at the first meeting, and then the vote to move forward, or not, at the second.
Is, would the proposed ordinance be, is it public right now, or, okay, can they find it on, I mean, they can find it on the agenda?
So, it's, it's on the agenda for this week. There's also a copy for anyone in the audience. There should be copies out there. I will make sure that the revised gets posted to the website. I'm not a hundred percent certain it was reposted. The, the original was, for a little background, this previously was introduced, or this was introduced under the previous council, so it was listed. I just want to make sure. So, I would say tomorrow by noon, any updated ordinance would be, draft would be online. But otherwise, the council packet does have it.
Okay.
So, anyone who downloads the council packet would have the correct one.
The most updated.
The most updated, yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Make a comment.
Councilor Mazarella?
The changes have gone back and forth quite a few times, and I looked at what's current, what's current now, compared it to the last version. There's quite a few of those changes have disappeared. Things have been added and then taken back out. Would it be possible to come up with a clean version that you can see what the changes are from the original?
So, the one that's posted online has changes from the one that you currently have, but it's not the same as?
The one that's in force right now.
It's not the same as the one that's in force right now?
Right, but it has, it has a number of changes, things that were incorporated and then deleted. So, you really can't see what was original.
So, I can change the color coding so that you can see the difference prior to the, I'll, I'll change it this week, so you'll have it prior to the public hearing.
Might be.
Yep, I can do that.
Helpful for people to try and understand what we're, what we're trying to do.
Because right now, you're probably seeing a revised copy of the revised ordinance from the first round.
There's three, three colors we're up to, I think.
Oh, well, so the color differential, there's a green in there. That denotes the fact that I moved it from one section below to a section above. That's why you see the second color. But, yep, I can create, I can fix that.
A little tough to follow.
Okay, so the green means it's not the newest of the new. It just simply means that it is new language that has been moved from one part of the ordinance to another part?
Correct. Right. So, it was deleted from section, let me just see that quickly. One, it must be one twenty-two dash eight. It was probably item E, one, two, three. It's now, oh, you're right, item F. It's now moved up into item E, one, two, three. But I'll, I'll fix it online just to avoid the confusion. It'll just be easier to start fresh.
What is existing, what is being deleted, and what is being added?
Correct.
If we could do that?
Yep.
Great, thank you. And then, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Counselor Forrest, who worked on this prior to this council. So, if you have any insight going forward after the, the public hearing, or even before the public hearing, it'd be greatly accepted for, for some edification for this. It would be appreciated.
Yeah, I followed the order that's previously prescribed.
Okay.
So, you can, but you can do it either way.
No. Do we have the minutes of December second in front of us? I think we all have it on our packet. Give you a second to, yeah, to review.
Mayor?
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah, I don't have a copy of the minutes in front of me, but I did look at it earlier today. Motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
Motion's made second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Motion to adopt the minutes is accepted. Motion to adopt the minutes is accepted. And we'll go back into second public comment. Anybody wishing to speak for a second time, or for the first time? Mr. Young?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. As I was talking about earlier, we need to find ways of reducing costs. And one of the costs that I'm going to address in a moment is the Keisha Farm. We paid a tremendous price for that piece of property, and now that piece of property is going to be dangling around our neck forever and ever. But I propose that we, we do something with that property and get it back on the tax roll. I believe that $70,000, $75,000 an acre was tremendous, and the only way we're going to recoup is to get that into a development position for some type of a planned community, some kind of a smaller home community in that area, in that, on that piece of property, that would be more or less ready for people who are retiring, people who are selling their house in Weathersfield or neighboring towns that want to stay in the area, or have two properties, have a property in the southern climate, and have a property up here in the northern climate. But the fact remains, if we got those plots with those nice homes sitting on them into a tax, taxable status, I think we, we could pull ourselves out of this mess that we're into. I've, I've talked about the prices, I've talked about prices of other properties prior to the purchase, and during the dishonesty of our government that we have here in Weathersfield for so long about that property. The failure of our government to tell us exactly what the, what the value was of that property. Now we're stuck. We couldn't sell that property for $2.4 million unless we found another town to buy it, because towns are the only ones that pay ridiculous prices for property. Except for Windsor, and except for Glastonbury. They get, they get good prices when they buy, but towns like Weathersfield, they don't give a who about money because it's, they don't care with this caliber of people we have that were on the council at that time. So I really believe if we, if we looked at that property as some kind of a planned community, some way of holding people, selling, selling those nice homes on small lots, where you can get a number of lots. And I'll give you an example. In the town of Manchester, there was, a year ago, 30 acres. Keisha Farm is 32. Sold for $549,000 a year ago. You just bought the Keisha Farm for what, 75,000, for $2.4 million, which was $75,000 an acre. This property is 500, call it $550,000, divided by 30 acres, you get $15,000 an acre. A real, a real bummer on the part of Weathersfield for when, when they put their heads together to buy property. This, but, this was bought by private developer, which, which I just got done saying, municipalities pay a lot more because that's how they are. They don't care. But you get a developer, he, he goes out and he bargains. Obviously, town of Weathersfield didn't bargain at all. Matter of fact, they probably gave more than what the guys wanted up at the Keisha Farm. But again, this 30 acres is going to yield 44 building lots. You think? And, and I heard like 34, 35 building lots for the Keisha Farm back only once or twice back during the brief conversations that we had from our town officials on that property. But this is going to yield 44, 44 little homes that would probably sell for $250,000 apiece. Bang, 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 and generate taxes, and no children, because it's one of those planned developments that don't allow children. And the guy, the people that buy it has a house in Florida or Carolinas, and they got a place up here, because they still have family here. And it might be the best option to do with that property. At least dollars and cents, it would be the best. And as I spoke a few, a little while ago about the Standish property, that is a, that is a big thing around our neck. Every couple of years, there's big buckaroos that we, citizens who don't have anything to do with that property, we have to pay, and we collect our, as a town, $100 a year, thanks to Mr. Forrest and his pals back 12 years ago when they signed that lease for 50 years. So I really would hope, Mayor, that, you know, you've got to start thinking about getting us out of this hole, because we are in a hole. And again, the Standish House, you've got to put it up on the chart, so everybody sees it, that in six years, you're going to start negotiating, because in eight years, it better be done, about what you're going to do. And, and same with this property. We need to unload it. Unload it as quickly as possible. It's the same idea as the Standish House. If we put a park in there, it's going to have costs every year. If we put some kind of stadium in there, it's even more cost. We know what Cottone Field cost us. If we end up putting a school in there, we know what that costs.
Okay.
And we don't need one of those either.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wanting to speak? Mr. Colantonio?
Good evening again, Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. I just, this is the end of the year, and I would just like to probably apologize to, to any of the members that have been probably offended by me and the previous council. Sometimes the way I come across, it's, this is my second language, I guess, you know, so it's, it's not as easy as, as one, one language. And, and I also want to wish everybody, you know, Merry Christmas and, and Happy New Year, too. And as we say in Italian, like, you know, Buon Natale e Felice Anno Nuovo, to everybody and the one that they're watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Anybody else wanting to speak? Well, speaking of Christmas and winter, I did want to say that the town of Weathersfield Police Department did issue a no parking ban effective at midnight tonight, until further notice, just in advance of the, the storm that's coming. So everybody be safe out on the roads tonight, tomorrow, and have a happy holiday and a safe new year. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Sorry. I've got to get into an executive session, that's right. Yep, thank you.
Move to executive session, Mayor. Motion to move into executive session.
Second. Motion to go into executive se, session and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.